The only improvements would be the feasibility report, updated feasibility report that came with this agenda that was dropped in your email box and provided to the media as to reflect the changes that had presented your presentation.
Yeah, very good. The next thing is public comments. Anybody here to address anything that's not in general? We could hear those comments at this time. Glad that you received anything in emails or?
We did not.
Nothing. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items are considered not controversial by staff and are recommended to be read and passed in one motion. Any person, councilperson, staff, citizen, or meeting attendee can request one or more items to be pulled from the consent agenda, and the item will be pulled and addressed immediately after the passage of the consent agenda. Otherwise, the following items will be passed in one motion. A approved city council work session minutes from April 5th, 2022. B approved city council minutes from April 5th, 2022. C approved payment of bills and finance report. D accept utilities commission meeting minutes of April 6th, 2022. E approved the North Central Medical Supply Developers Agreement. F approved the North Central Medical Supply Stormwater Facilities Maintenance Agreement. G approved the development agreement for Campbell Development LLC Miners Department's Phase B and C improvements. H approved the Campbell Development LLC Miners First Edition Stormwater Facilities Maintenance Agreement. I approved the Campbell Development LLC Miners Limited Use Agreement. J adopt resolution number 2022-032 approving petition and waiver agreement with Campbell Development LLC for capital project 4087. K approved the Northern Plains Contracting Inc. Marshall Assessment Number 7 in the amount of $158,214.51 for the water treatment plan improvements project. L approved the Urski Excavating Inc. Change Order Number 1 amending the contract completion dates for the Section 6 Area A1 Stormwater Outlet Project. M approved the SEH supplemental letter agreement in the not to exceed amount of $8,400 for the water treatment plant operations training. N approved the BNSF invoice number 90235061 in the amount of $10,063.16 for the rear row noise zone assessment. O adopt resolution number 2022-033 receiving the feasibility report and calling the improvement hearing for the Cypress Drive, excuse me, Douglas Fir Drive Improvements Project Municipal Project Number 4087. P approved the wet set agreement for professional services in the not to exceed amount of $3,500 to hold the improvement hearing for the 2023 Nova Drive Improvements Project. Q approved the KLM Engineering Proposal in the amount of $3,800 to perform a clean out and disinfection of the South Water Tower. R approved the Crowe County Construction Cost Share Agreement for roadway pavement markings on various City of Baxter Streets, Project Number CP 18-200-117. S approved the amendment to Part 1 Wellhead Protection Plan. T approved the City of Baxter Sanitary Sewer Maintenance Policy. U adopt resolution 2022-031 establishing municipal state aid streets. V accept planning commission meeting minutes from April 12th, 2022. W approved a purchase of canine protective vest. X appoint Lance Hurst to the patrol sergeant position at grade 10, Step 7, and Taylor Horverson to the patrol sergeant position at grade 10, Step 5. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
Motion to adjourn. Second, if I were any further discussion, all papers add it.
Hi.
Go same side. Motion carries. There are no bold agenda items, so we'll move on to number eight, other business. Adopt resolution 2022-034 on 3/5 in ordinance 3/3.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is a request for zoning ordinance amendment for the subject property to rezoning property from R2 and R3 to planning and development, preliminary and final plat, as well as a planning and development general and final plan to allow the subject development that will be going over here this evening. So the subject site is 23 acres approximately. You heard about a lot of the infrastructure at the work session, right, the council meeting. I'll go through, try not to cover too much of the same information. Specifically, the development is to construct 289 multifamily units on the subject properties. Specifically, to break that down, we've got three 57-unit buildings and two 59-unit buildings, as well as a clubhouse building that's about 5,000 square feet. There'd be a number of amenities proposed within the development. I'll go through those a little bit later in the presentation. This aerial photo shows the subject area of the development in blue. You can see Hinckley Road to the north of the subject property and Haven's Scenic Road or County Road 48 to the south of the property. And you can see kind of a cleared area where Cypress would need to be extended to support the development. You can see we've already added future potential addresses for the subject development, and these are the approximate locations of the buildings throughout the subject site area. And this map was shown also previously, but this is the public infrastructure portion of the project showing the extension of Cypress through the development planning area, which is, this is basically that blue area that was on the aerial photo a page before. You can see the buildings and their related garages. I'll go into those in a little bit more detail here. But first, this is the preliminary plat showing how the lots would be established as part of the development. Basically, got four properties on the west side of Cypress and two properties on the east side. The four on the west side, each property would include one building, except for this property along Cypress would include an apartment building and a clubhouse in this corner, southwest corner of Hinckley and Cypress Drive. The other three properties would have an individual apartment building on each lot, as well as this lot on the east side of Cypress, south of Hinckley, would include one apartment building and its related garage. And then out lot A would be for stormwater purposes on the south end of the development site. This is the proposed layout of the buildings. A little bit difficult to see, but we have some zoomed in plans, which I can show you in a bit here. But basically, all of the apartment buildings are oriented paralleling Hinckley. So this would be the apartment building, and part of the development plan includes attaching garages to the subject buildings. So it's a climate-controlled garage scenario. So they're technically attached garages where residents can go to their garage spaces through a climate-controlled scenario without having to walk outside. So they are connected at the center points above this location here. In terms of drive aisles, there would be drive aisle access points that were reviewed back when the traffic study was completed for the development. The developer did make some changes that were recommended from the traffic study to change the access locations in a manner conducive of accepting the traffic in the area, and the developer did make those changes recommended by the traffic study before submitting for these applications. But you've got access locations to the west, I think four access locations to Hinckley along the project area, as well as three access points to Cypress for these two buildings that parallel Cypress. These are some of the elevations showing how, rendering showing how the development would look. This is looking southwest from the intersection of Hinckley and Cypress. So you've got the clubhouse building, which is a one-story building, and then you can see the three-story buildings as they, three buildings along Hinckley and then one along Cypress here. Another rendering showing how those buildings would look, each with their own balcony and or patio area and the extra materials and design that's proposed. Zoomed in a little bit so you can see, and I, there's a number of renderings that we could show. They have a lot of different just views. We tried to just capture a few of them to give you a flavor of how this is going to look. This is a rendering that shows how the garages would relate to the apartments. You can see how those garages have kind of a T within the design. You can see some exterior garage doors and then how that connects. A little bit difficult to see, but how it connects to the backside of each apartment building. So you do have drive aisle space where you can come in and use surface parking, going to the garages here. But in each of the situation, each apartment building, there's a drive aisle on the backside that allows for roaming of traffic around the buildings as well. This is a view zoomed in of the clubhouse, related play area on the exterior. So getting to the actual developer review, and I'm gonna move quickly through this, but feel free to ask any questions the council has. As part of the developer review, we looked at the plat requirements as part of the development request. In terms of access and traffic, the developers proposed an application that meets the traffic study requirements, and so the access plan is compliant with all of those aspects. The developer is providing right-of-way as part of the plat specifically for Cypress Drive. There's 120 feet approximately being dedicated, as well as on the west side of the property as well. Park dedication is required with the plat, and really in terms of our review of the plat, we were looking at the plat, although it's a PUD, we were looking at it based on the R3 standards, which are our, which is our high density residential zoning district. In terms of the planning and development, one of the reasons for rezoning to planning and development is due to the size and complexity of the project, the time needed to build it, phasing plans needed, and the phasing plan was submitted with the development as part of their narrative, and the city is part of that phasing plan as well because we need to obviously construct Cypress Drive to support the development as well. But Phase 1 would include the construction of buildings B and C, as well as the clubhouse, which would start in 2022, and after that point, then Cypress would be constructed in 2023, and then the phasing plan continues beyond that with approximately one building per year. So, and those three remaining buildings are not specifically identified. So we know the developer wants to start with buildings B and C first, as well as the clubhouse in that, and starting on that in 2022, but we don't know which of the remaining three buildings would go happen in 2024, 25, and 26. It probably relates to how fast Cypress Drive gets built and some of those factors as well. But specifically in the PUD, there is a five-year phase plan that's being requested with the proposals here tonight. Some elements of the planning and development that are being proposed are some basically project upgrades that are part of the development. Anytime you review a PUD, there's review for possible project flexibilities that are requested by the developer, and also some project upgrades that are being proposed to offset those flexibilities requested, and that's really a negotiation as part of the development review process. Some of the aspects of the development that are proposed as project upgrades are certainly the sidewalk and your connectivity that's proposed throughout the development. When you look at each of the individual subject properties and apartment development sites, each of them has the sidewalk on the interior side, on this garage side, on the back of the building. Also, and each of those sidewalks connect across properties and then back to the clubhouse. There's also sidewalk connections proposed out to Hinckley Road, to Cypress where appropriate. So there's a complete connectivity plan proposed throughout the development, so residents and the development can get out to the public's trail system as well as navigate within the private site. Another aspect of the development, the developer is proposing to construct a trail along the south side of Hinckley Road for buildings, apartment buildings A, B, and C. So this is the landscape plan and the site layout for building A. I'm gonna kind of scroll through here, and you can see the trail along Hinckley as we go from west to east. Here's building B. You can see the trail along Hinckley, building C, and then as well as the clubhouse. In front of the clubhouse, you can see that trail that goes right up to the intersection with Cypress. So there'd be a new 10-foot wide trail put into that right-of-way as part of the development and connections throughout that as well. Another aspect of the development plan is the attached garage scenario and also the aspect of how many garage units they're proposing. The developer has proposed one garage space approximately per unit of garage space and one space of surface parking per unit, and they would only need to be half of that amount of garage space. So certainly an amenity is proposed to provide garage space to allow each resident the opportunity to have a garage and not just every other unit. So that's being proposed as an upgrade. Another couple of aspects to the development plan I wanted to point out is parking lot islands. The developers exceeded the ordinance requirements for parking lot islands. We only require parking lot islands on the outer rows. That would be the backsides of the development area, one per 10 stalls, but they are proposing parking lot islands in the interior parking areas as well. So that would be an island with an overstory deciduous tree to just added amenities as part of the project. The other amenities I wanted to point out is really the development amenities themselves. Within the clubhouse, there's, you know, pet washing spaces, exercise areas, and all sorts of different amenities that are proposed within that clubhouse and as part of the development. This is a floor plan that shows the clubhouse and how that would be used. So there is leasing space and office space for the development, but there's also a fitness room, game room, community space, and a patio that goes out to that outer playground area. So certainly amenities being proposed for the residents, future residents of this development. In terms of the remainder of the ordinance review, we have reviewed the application based on the ordinance. There are a few areas where flexibility is requested. Otherwise, for the most part, they're meeting our ordinance requirements. Few things that I want to point out is flexibility that's requested with the development is units per building. Currently in the R3 zoning district, we do cap sites with a 50 units per building cap. They are exceeding that with the individual buildings being at 57 and 59 units. So that is an area requested for flexibility. Another area is to allow a zero-lot line situation. There's obviously drive aisles, parking lots, trash enclosures that are on lot lines, and so those just need to be addressed with an easement, as well as to address the regional bonding scenario that was talked about earlier. We need to address all of those things into reportable easements to make sure those joint facilities are addressed to the title of each property so that they remain joint over, over time. Another couple of areas of flexibility. One is with architectural review. The architectural ordinance requires six 12-pitch roofs as a minimum for the pitch. They do have six 12-pitch roofs throughout the development, but some 512-pitch roofs as well. So there's some flexibility requested for that, as well as some flexibility to the overall requirement for trees and shoves. And I do want to point out, although they have some less trees and shoves that are required by the ordinance, there are some other things that they are proposing with the development that I want to point out. Specifically, when you look at the development pattern along Hinckley, if you look at the south property line, it's difficult to read here, but it talks about preserving existing trees in a 30-foot area to the south property line. And this entire site, all the sites here on the south end are wooded, and so by preserving that 30-foot along the south property line, there would be a lot of trees preserved in the back as a buffer to the neighboring property owners. And that 30-foot easement goes all the way from Douglas Fir through buildings A, B, C, and then there's a little pinch point here where the property line gets close, but then even on building D, there's a 30-foot preserve over here as well. So there's an area of trees that'd be preserved in the back, no grading in that area. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is that they are proposing a solid row of pine trees, the most easterly building, and off this page is the twin homes of Berrywood. And so there are some areas that are more open and some areas that are better in terms of tree coverage, but all those twin homes would be looking out their back windows towards this development, and these screened trees will provide a little breakup of the parking surface as people pull into their parking stalls, use the garage space, provide some additional screening for those existing residents to the east. I think with that, the planning commission did review the application, and all the applications that are in front of you tonight that are recommending approval. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel questions of Josh?
Josh, I have just a couple. You know, when they have a future proposal of buildings, A, D, I think it is, those guidelines still will need to be followed that are currently up here?
Correct.
And what happens if, if all of a sudden they build, and then in the future, they find, oh, we should have done this?
Yeah.
How do we, how do we deal with those changes? Would we approve this?
Good question. So when you, when you do a planning and development, the resolution that approves the PUD specifically references their plans that they've submitted with a planning. So the site plans that you have in your packet are very specific approval for this development. So if they want to change something, really, anything other than a very minor percentage of change that's allowed under the PUD ordinance, they'd have to come back through the process.
All right. And then maybe you said this, and I might have missed it. How large are you, each of the three units? Square foot ones?
Yes, they have different sizes. They have one, two, and three bedroom options, and the developers here, they could probably answer that if you're interested in it better than I, than I could.
Okay.
I have a question kind of along those lines, and maybe this is way too premature, but I get asked often, and probably others do too, about such a lack of affordable housing in the area. And you may need a crystal ball, but do you have any feel for what monthly rent will be? Because I mean, it's out of reach of a lot of families, and I know that's a concern for many of us, probably too mature to have an answer.
We can bring, yeah, any more questions to Josh, though, before we?
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I'm ignoring Josh.
Get this set on. We'll be with Josh. Okay. But as the developer, whoever wants to represent and come forward if you would, you have any questions or comments of us, feel free. Can you address yourself?
Sure. David Campbell, representing the ownership group of the project. So, yeah, questions, affordability. The project itself will not be Section A or Section 42, so it will not qualify as low income or affordable, another way to say it. Average rents, 1,500? Somewhere around there?
Per, how many bedrooms?
Two bedrooms. Yeah.
And then do the renters sign a one-year lease?
Typically, yeah. Yeah, at the planning meeting, we had this conversation, very similar conversation, and unfortunately, inflation has hit construction costs dramatically. So to build this project today is probably costing us 30% more than it would have two years ago.
And that's reflected down the rest, then?
Yeah. Yeah.
So David, as you write, include the unit and the garage. Is there any other excess fees, extra fees?
Yeah, no, we're planning on including the garage with it, yeah.
And what is the square foot? Is it like one and two and three bedrooms?
Our one bedrooms will be just under 800 square feet. Our two bedrooms will be about 1,050 square feet. Three bedrooms, 1,400. Give or take, yeah.
So 1,500 for the, for the two-bedroom. Councilman Lucille, I've had asked, what about the one and three bedroom?
Three bedrooms would be about 1,400 square feet. Oh, price, I know. Now you're jogging that memory. Mike, would I have, do I have the rents listed out in there? What are we plugging for the third, three bedrooms?
Oh, about 1,700.
1,700.
And then plus electricity?
Electricity, yeah, yeah.
You want to just share with us what you did the other night about vacancy rate in the apartment? I think, you know, people get, I get scared when I see all these apartments go up.
Yeah.
So if you could just reiterate what you talked about the other night?
Yeah, so we've never developed a project in Baxter. We do own, we purchased about five years ago, the Cypress Core Apartments, which are just to the north, northeast of here. We purchased that project, and we also, so we own and manage that one right now, and the Clearwater Estates, which are just to the northwest. So altogether, it's around 250 units we currently own and manage in this market. So we're not new to the market. We are new to development in the market. Our vacancy rate, it's been 0% for five years. We have nothing available ever, so we decided it'd be a great spot to build.
Do you have any questions or comments on, you went through this twice now, but it's pretty well familiar with what the conditions are?
Yeah, no, Josh and staff have been great to work with. Yeah, it's been painless and very, we felt like we had a lot of support for the project, so thanks for that.
Anything else? Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
So we'll look for somebody on one motion, Josh, or all these separate there?
You can go either way, and you could conclude together if you want, or separate them out as well. You've got, you've got basically the ordinance and two resolutions there, the ordinance for the rezoning and the resolution for the PUD and the resolution for the plat.
So I want to take a stab at it.
I believe that we adopt resolutions 034 and 035, as well as ordinance 033.
Okay, I'm excited by Lucille. Any further discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Post-adj signed. Motion carries. Start digging and start bounding. Very good. We'll move on to council comments. Scotty?
This comment is related to the new superintendent of Brainerd School District. Just like to congratulate Dr. Heidi Hahn for being offered that position, and I'm a strong believer, as a lot of us are, that when you have a strong and healthy school district, it does nothing but good things for the surrounding communities, and I think that she'll be a good leader for the district down Baxter and Brainerd. So congratulations.
Very good.
Hey, Scotty, can I draw? Again, it seems like every time I come, I start with thank you. Thank you to the mayor, council, and staff for covering me, period, and I really appreciate it. Feeling pretty good. I have three mail appointments coming up, but we take it at any time. It was truly a blessing. My wife and I were able to spend a fair amount of time. So thank you for all of that, because I know there was some heavy lifting on all of your, on all of your parts, and my wife and I both appreciate it very much. Having said that, you know, I follow my doctor Brad occasionally, and kept abreast, he kept me abreast of a lot that's going on, and I so much appreciate that. And so I particularly want to thank you for the vote on the broadband. That's a huge vote for people in our area and, and just in the city of Baxter. Because one of the questions I'm gonna ask is if there's broadband help out there, because it seems to be something that, you know, futuristic and all building proposals, developments that we should be aware of, and I assume that there is. So, and our heavy lifting you did on the assessment hearings and road projects and things as such, I do want to ask council, the mayor, and that I would like to revisit, not revisit, I want to, at the next work session, I would like to talk again about the special events. Because the council meeting, I know you did a lot of work on that, and I, we all appreciate that in the project. But I just want to discuss the special events policy again, and I know, I know that's probably painful. I know that. I get it. I understand it. I've talked to the parties that were involved and interested in, after the council meeting, but I just want to, I just want to, I want, I want to give you some input and ask some more questions to remember. So I'm asking for that to be a subject of the next work session.
Are you guys, have you guys met on that, or?
No, the, the conclusion of the meeting was we would set a time and a future date to go over the policy. There wasn't a specific date to that we would do that. It would be as time missed that we could get it on a future work session. The only action from the last council meeting was the creation of a subgroup to review our future connection charge, which we're working through. But there was not a subgroup that was inside of the last. So it's meant to be a general conversation.
Okay. That's, that's one reason we'll talk, I would have that. See, that's one reason why I want to have that as a review.
All ready?
Is it okay?
All right.
Okay. And I want to also, councilwoman, councilwoman Lysio, congratulations to Dr. Hahn. She will be a great, in my opinion, she'll be a great leader for us in this district. And I so much appreciate, we got invites to all the openings, all the regular ones coming up. Although I haven't been here much, you'll see me all the time. You want, you, you, you see.
Am I butterflying that out again? Okay, yes, we did. Specifically, we got invited to the, well, two of them are in Baxter, so we can, so it'll be there too. I don't have any except to reiterate what's just been said. I think I do do a great job too. And I gotta believe that school board has reviewed and seen that was a long, long, drawn-out process, but a very important one. So I mean, I'm glad they put the time into it, that they did, and I think they've come to a great conclusion too. So, or, or city administrator?
Just two items, Mayor. The first one is construction or renovation of the filtration system in the final stages. They've ramped up the wells, are pumping the wells into the system, turned it on. We are doing testing on a daily basis. Not on wood, all continue to go in the right direction. We are intending to send out a PSA at the end of the week indicating that we will be producing water and distributing it through our system next Monday, Monday the twenty-fifth. So, and then the other one is just a reminder that the annual, the Minnesota City's Annual Conference is June twenty-second, twenty-fourth, early registration. Ends the twenty-ninth, the week from Friday. Thank you for those that have indicated their intentions to attend. We will be registering all that have indicated that their attendance next Friday. If you have not, please get or informed us of your intentions, please do so before next Friday.
Okay. City attorney?
The only item that we have is to go to a closed session to talk about, as a law under Minnesota statutes, to talk about real estate, purposely to talk about against, being as a railroad crossing at Inglewood Drive. So we're looking for a motion to move to closed session.
So.
Second of us, you're all here. Thanks for coming. Do you have time, David? This ain't a long closed session. Do you have time? I would sure like to touch base with you on that, you know, while I got you in person. I'll put you in the conference room here. And I would think that it's only a part of the conference.